Being said, good morning. Welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, May 5th, 2021. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. Meetings can now be viewed live on the City Channel and live streamed on YouTube. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. After you are called, please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Sarah Gopal.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. I am Sarah Gopal. I am in Perry South. And this is my first time joining, and I joined because I saw you were going through some property sales from the city. So just as way of background, I grew up in Pittsburgh. My husband and I moved back in 2020. And it was our dream to build a single-family home in the city. So we acquired a piece of property, and I had no idea. I didn't even imagine it would be so difficult to acquire the adjacent lot from the city. So that was my first exposure. And since then, there are some other properties I'd like to acquire and improve. But I feel like it's really a black box process, so I'm really just trying to understand the process. I know you're going through, I think, sixteen transactions today. So obviously, someone's successful in this process. I don't know if I should just assume that they went through the process and waited through, and it took years for that to happen. So my question to you is really what information is available to the public so we can understand kind of the process a little bit better? And, you know, what steps could I be taking to to be successful in acquiring the properties I'm interested in? I think we'd all agree that transparency should be a goal for an equitable process. So here's my request. I'll just get to the chase here. I came across the city site for permitting, where there's a ton of information provided. If this process for tax sales inside yard sales could provide similar information, so in the permitting process, they give you a beautiful map. You can click through. It tells you the date the permit was applied for, and then the whole workflow of the process. You know, so what revisions were requested, when there were inspections, and then finally, when the permit is issued. So my request really is if you could create something like that for for acquiring properties from the city, because it really feels like a black box. And I know I've been frustrated in their scores, if not hundreds of other people who really are just trying to acquire property, make improvements, get properties back on the tax rolls. So that's the request. Thanks so much for your time again.
Thank you very much. Our second speaker is Joseph Thomas Glassbriner. Is Mr. Glassbriner with us? I don't see him as an attendant, intendee. Therefore, we'll move on to our next speaker, which is Shaman Poma.
Greetings, greetings, Grand Rising. I'm Shaman Poma Chakmamia Holihay of the Air Qua Confederacy of the Aboriginal American People. Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania municipal officers are in violation of human rights and collective rights of our people and individuals. And we have international human rights laws and the right to the full enjoyment of all human rights, fundamental freedoms as recognized in the United Nations and the OAS charters, as well as Pennsylvania Charter, which the United States of America are members of, the OAS, and your United States Constitution, and with which you are bound by oath. We reject assimilation and are free from any external attempts at assimilation. You must protect us against genocide, racism, racial discrimination, xenophobia, and related intolerance, and forced assimilation from yourselves, and all the aforementioned. None shall carry out, adopt, support, or favor any policy of assimilation of our peoples or of the destruction of our cultures, for our people have the right to be free from any object of any form of genocide or any attempts to exterminate us. And by ignoring your obligations and sworn oaths, you are doing such that. Any attempt to remove our people from our lands and jurisdictions, whether it's physically or through paperwork processes, as the true sovereigns of the Americas, and through any means, including forced assimilations, is in fact an act of genocide and crimes against humanity, which are in fact war crimes. With the penalty of imprisonment and/or death, I remind you all, Aaron Bruni, OMI, and the officers in the mayor's office, whom are ignoring our rights while allowing them to be violated. There is no statute of limitation for anyone violating our rights. We have much evidence of these crimes and of your lack of properly protecting our people. And I remind you, there is a higher court than your jurisdiction within the Constitution. We will never cease exposing the corruption in the city of Pittsburgh until higher courts intervene, and all parties involved are held accountable. Again, there is no statute of limitations. Do the right thing by our people, as the days are numbered. And I remind, there is no statute of limitations for war crimes, genocide, and forced assimilation. We are working on legislation. We will be passing that through your offices very soon. I yield.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ikuhana Halma Kina.
Greetings, Inla Keshalaka Ing. My title is Ikuhana Halma Kina. I am the Grand Inpa of the Air Qua Confederacy of the Aboriginal American People. I greet you in peace, light, love, and harmony. And I echo the sentiments expressed by Shaman Poma. As we have been very diligent, calling in to express the concern of being forcibly assimilated into your municipality, to follow your codes, policies, statutes, which we are not bound by law to do so. And we have been adamantly expressing these concerns to you for the fact that we are being forcibly assimilated. If we were not, we would not be here present, speaking in front of City Council. So with that being said, we are asking, we are demanding for you, City Council, to take action. As you have expressed on other occasions that you have this oversight as City Council members, then take action, because your silence is saying to us that you agree with us being forcibly assimilated. We are protected under the Constitution, according to Article One, Section Two, Clause Three of the Constitution, and excluding Indians, not Tacs. In order to be Tacs, that is to be enumerated, that is to be counted, that is to be censured, that is to be handled according to etymology of the word tax, as it is expressed also in in Bouvier's dictionary of eighteen fifty-six, when the word came into existence. And so with that being said, we would like to continue the conversations that were initiated with eight of your members. We've spoken to eight of you. There's one of you who has blatantly disregarded our request. It is your duty to protect us, because we are here in what is now known as the city of Pittsburgh, but we are not of the city of Pittsburgh. However, we come in contact with your municipal security guards, your, what you call, police officers, public servants, if you will. These very same public servants are violating our rights almost on a daily basis now. What will you do? Will you make a phone call? My phone number is four one two five eight three zero nine three nine, in case you did not have it, or in case anyone else is listening on this line and would like to be an ally who respects our rights, who would like to stand in solidarity with the Aboriginal American people. We are the people of the land. We will not be ignored. There is precedent set. House Joint Resolution three thirty-one.
Thank you very much. Having exhausted our list of registered speakers, we'll now move on to our Standing Committee agenda, and would a clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Cogia.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Cowsmith. Ms. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Leval, Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. The first committee for today is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. Our first new paper is Bill fourteen eleven.
Bill fourteen eleven, providing for the sale of certain property acquired by the city of tax sales items A through H, sixteen forty-two Worthington, Zero Gopher, Zero Killborne, nine sixty-four Mountain, Zero Industry, ten thirty-one Woods Run, thirty-two fifty-one Central, seventeen oh three Termin.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I want to make a motion to remove item H, which is seventeen oh three Termin Avenue in Brighton Heights.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to let everyone know that this is a property that's in Brighton Heights. The community group has been taking care of this property. Right now, they're not the ones that will be on the purchase agreement, but they they also have a memorial on the site. So we need to have a bigger discussion about it before this moves forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor to amend the bill by deleting H, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is amended by deleting H. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill is now recommended. Let the record reflect, we've been joined by Council President Smith. Bill fourteen twelve.
Can I just say that the record reflect, Councilwoman Smith was here waiting to get logged in. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think David is having some trouble this morning. Bill fourteen twelve, resolution providing for the conveyance by the city of certain property, having been placed for sale to adjourning property owners in conjunction with the city of Pittsburgh sideyard program items A through H, eight sixteen Cherokee, Zero Stanley, fourteen seventeen Warner, sixteen oh eight, sixteen oh six, and sixteen hundred Brighton, sixteen oh seven through oh nine McCullough, and seventeen thirty-three McCullough.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fourteen sixteen.
Bill fourteen sixteen, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh code Title One Administrative Article Nine Boards, Commissions, and Authorities to add a subsection one seventy-seven A eleven LGBT to business enterprises.
Motion to approve.
Against.
Any discussion?
Just briefly, just want to recognize and thank Councilwoman Strasburger for her work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Your Chair. Yep. Yeah, I just wanted to, I want, well, thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Kraus for recognizing that. And I also just wanted to make sure we bring Jonathan Lovitz and Ron Hicks to the table to answer any questions in case people do have questions about this. It's a little bit nuanced in that typically we think of minority and women-owned business participation as something that flows through the URC. And this is a little bit different. This is something that allows for registered certified, so certified with the NGLCC, Jonathan Lovitz's organization, to to register as such with the city of Pittsburgh and have access to some of the resources, the training and that the city of Pittsburgh has to offer, but also that the Three Rivers Business Alliance has to offer as well. And really just to continue to demonstrate to both the city and contractors that the city works with, but to the general public that LGBTQIA plus businesses are a really important part of our economy. So and to collect the data on how many are registering with the city so that in the point in the future, when we do do a disparity study, we have that data already for the percentage of businesses that are registered and certified. So I think it's all really positive, but it's just a little bit of a nuanced conversation. So just wanted to make sure that these two, well, first of all, recognizing both who are here today, too, and thank them so much for all their technical assistance, helping to stand next to me at every single meeting as we were explaining this to people. Oh, we have Michael Testa here as well, also from the Three Rivers Business Alliance. So we, just to thank all of them for for helping and push this along over a long two-year and three-year process here. But if there are any questions, they're they're ready to answer them as well.
Thank you very much. Is there any further members for discussion? Seeing none, we want to thank you for your hard work on this, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is, has an affirmative recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That moves us to our invoices. We need a motion to approve the invoices.
Done, moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Now I need a motion to approve the P cards.
Done, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to our Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Mr. O'Connor, one supplemental paper, Bill fourteen forty-two.
Bill fourteen forty-two, resolution adopting the Allegheny County Hazard Mitigation Plan as the official hazard mitigation plan of the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Our only new paper, Bill fourteen ten.
Bill fourteen ten, ordinance amending a supplement in the Pittsburgh City Code Title Six Entitled Conduct, Article One Entitled Regulated Rights and Actions, Chapter six oh one Entitled Public Order, to amend the title and substance of section six oh one seventeen, currently reading reserved with the title Hate Crimes and substantive legislation to provide for additional penalties for criminal conduct motivated by hatred towards certain characteristics of other persons under certain terms and conditions.
Motion to approve.
Again.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gross.
Um. Can we have, what is, what is this doing here? It's creating an empty section of code?
May I?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Chair, if you will permit it, excuse me, it actually adopts the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's definition of ethnic intimidation and adds it to our code, which does not exist previously, even though I would have thought it would have. So the, our supplemental papers on it says this ordinance adds protection against hate crimes based on characteristics of other persons that are not included in the, I'm sorry, that are not included in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's definition of ethnic intimidation. The ordinance says protections against crimes motivated by hatred towards or actual or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, expression, or disability of an individual or group of individuals.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I apologize. Could you tell me where you're reading from?
This is.
In the text file?
Yeah, this is what came with our, is the summary cover letter.
Okay, so I've got legislature open here, but I only have whereas clauses. Let me see, maybe I missed it. I see it here. Okay, so the title on our agenda. Why does it say reserved for future legislation? If that is the body of the legislation, why does the title say that it's just currently reading reserved, reserved for future legislation?
Perhaps we need some more.
So it's maybe it's empty now, and this bill fills it in.
I believe that's the case, Councilwoman, but.
Yeah, okay.
The administration should better explain it, but I believe.
But I see, I see the full text here now. I think I hadn't just clicked to load the full page and was only reading the whereas clauses. So I I think this is incredibly helpful, and I've been tracking a number of hate speech incidents throughout my district, and we've reported that Lawrenceville United has been reporting them, the incidents in Lawrenceville to the FBI, and I've been consolidating reports from the rest of my district in order to report those because it's also helpful to them to know where there's incidents of hate speech and the content of that speech. So I'm happy to see this and happy to support it. Thank you for helping me figure that out.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Cogill, one deferred paper, Bill thirteen sixty-seven.
Bill thirteen sixty-seven, ordinance extinguishing in easement in twenty-foot strip of real property adjacent to the easterly side of Twenty First Street, sixty feet in width between Smallman and Railroad in the second ward.
Motion to hold for one week.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Mr. Wilson, we have two supplemental papers, the first being fourteen fifty.
Bill fourteen fifty, resolution amending Resolution three fifty of twenty twenty to authorize the entering into of leases by the Department of City Planning for display of art in connection with a professional services agreement with Boom Concepts and/or Bloomfield Garfield Corporation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fourteen sixty.
Bill fourteen sixty, resolution proclaiming Pittsburgh City Council's intent to introduce ordinance placing limitations on the use of single-use plastic bags within the city.
Motion to approve. Discussion.
Again.
I'll defer to the Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thanks, Councilman. This is, this is going to be a precursor to future legislation. And so I understand that there's, a lot of members have been thinking about this issue, whether it's litter, whether it's single-use plastics, whether it's bags, whether it's preemption for many, many years now. So please know that this is not the actual legislation. This is a resolution basically noting City Council's intention to, in the future, hopefully this summer, with many partners, hopefully some of you as well, at the table, introducing that legislation that would place either a ban or a fee on plastic, single-use plastic bags in the city of Pittsburgh. And we've already been working with a number of partners and aren't quite ready there yet, because we want to make sure that this is not such a narrow ordinance that we don't have a holistic view of all the different carrots and sticks available to make this a reality and to actually make it positive and net positive for restaurants and retailers rather than just a penalty. But what this does do is it indicates that we are going to do this in the future in in an effort to allow the city of Pittsburgh to join as an intraveener to a lawsuit the city of Philadelphia filed against the state for preempting cities from actually regulating this. So that is, this is in an effort to demonstrate that we do indeed have standing up over and above the work that we already do to recycle and to and to, you know, reduce waste and litter for the benefit of our city and the health of our residents.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, Councilwoman Kraus?
Yeah, thank you. So this is certainly oversimplifying and maybe even a little Pollyanna-ish. But I remember traveling a few years ago, maybe even five, seven years ago, I was in New York in Washington DC. As many of you know, I tend to like to visit retail establishments. Everywhere I went, I was asked, do I want a bag? It didn't matter where it was, you know, a drugstore, shoe store, you know, a a clothing store, everybody asked, do you want a bag? And it was just that awareness of, first of all, thank you for asking me, and second, no, thank you, I don't need to take a bag. And I don't know if there's a way that we as the city could could find ways to encourage local businesses that do use single-plastic bags to begin a a sort of a public service campaign about asking whether or not someone really needs a bag. I try everywhere I go not to take a bag, if at all possible. I haven't quite succeeded in keeping bags in the car, reusable bags to take and use with me, so shame on me. But if I can leave an establishment without a bag, I will do so. And so I, you know, I don't know if this is a talk with IMP or, you know, City Channel, but I just wonder if there's a way we collectively as a city could could encourage a a more public ad campaign about asking if you really need to take a bag or not. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Cogill?
Yes. So Councilwoman Strasburger, I guess this question's for you. So so much like our speeding laws, you know, we cannot regulate as a city, single-use plastics. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, can I interrogatory?
Yes.
Thank you. So yes, that's the, that's the case, except up until just two years ago, we did have the power to. And the state legislature was unable to get us, get their own bill banning the regulation of plastic bags and styrofoam and other such items as a bill through the legislature. So they tacked it on to the budget process. And all of you were wonderful partners in signing on to a letter to the legislature, asking them to vote against this provision of the budget when they tried to do that two years ago. Well, last year they did it again. And that ban sunsets at the end of July of this year or the end of the executive order on declaring a state of emergency because of the pandemic. But we're fearful that they will do that again this budget. And this is a way for cities to sort of hit back and say, no, don't tell us how to regulate or you know, our own plastic bags. Or I mean, our own city, when it comes to an issue that is, has wide-ranging effects like this.
No, thanks for your work on it, Councilwoman Strasburger. I'll be in full support of any measures we take from here going on. Thanks.
Thank you. Any for, anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I'll just say that we've talked about the desire to reduce and eliminate plastic waste many times at this table, so I'm happy to support as well. Thank you for finding out about this opportunity.
Thank you. Any further members? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That exhausts our agenda for today. We do have some meeting announcements this afternoon at one PM. Other is?
Yeah.
One more page.
Yeah, we have Urban and Rec, and we have Intergovernmental Affairs, and we have one more new one under, missing a page.
You're right. I apologize.
Someone hit the enter button a few times.
No, it, it, it's like, I had to scroll down. It was empty on my thing.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
So sorry, the first new paper was still under the Councilwoman Strasburger's committee, Bill fourteen fourteen.
Bill fourteen fourteen, ordinance amending and supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine Zoning Article Three Overlay Zoning District, Chapter nine oh seven, Development Overlay Districts, removing subsection nine oh seven oh two K for iPod six inclusionary housing overlay district and creating nine oh seven oh four A inclusionary housing overlay district.
Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held for cablecast public hearing. That takes us to Urban Recreation Committee chaired by Councilwoman Burgess, Bill fourteen oh eight.
Bill fourteen oh eight, resolution submitting the recommendation of the commission on naming public properties to formalize break parts trail name Clayton Hill Trump Trail Concrete Block in two seventy-six.
Motion to hold for public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held for a public hearing. That takes us to our last committee for today, Intergovernmental Affairs chaired by Councilwoman Gross, Bill fourteen oh nine.
Bill fourteen oh nine, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official four facilities plan for one Bill fourteen oh nine, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official four facilities plan for one thirty-one Shiloh Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Councilman, do you want any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say, can we pass this? I want to see how we have to pass this for final approval today because this company has been waiting to open up on Shiloh Street in Mount Washington for some time. The tap and fees were an issue for them. We worked with that with the administration, with Councilwoman Strasburgers. I want to thank you for that. And the folks at PWSA to help them a little bit, but they really have been waiting and they can't wait much longer to open their doors. Every day is costing them money. So what do we have to do to pass this final vote today?
Is that a question for Madam Clerk?
Yes. We'll need to waive the rules, counsel. Okay. Then.
Okay.
Take a motion to waive the rules.
Not sure we can exactly do it that way. I think. I, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I don't know. I think, I don't know how we would do it. I gotta think about it. Because we didn't, we didn't, we didn't recess the meeting yesterday. And I'm not sure we can re, we can do this.
They didn't ask us to do it. I just wanted to help them out. I thought if we could help them.
Because of public notice. I'm not sure we can do it because there's no public notice.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Just, just pass it then. I'm good with passing it.
I'm not, I'm not saying we can't. I'm not, I'm just, I'm not sure because of the lack of public notice. I'm not sure we can, I'm not sure we can.
Do we have another bill? So we have another, so this is the only bill we have.
Yeah, and you wouldn't want it to be legally tenuous.
Right. They didn't ask for it. I just thought it would be a way to help them out, but they didn't ask for it, so I'm okay with doing what we're doing. That's okay.
I'm not saying we can't. I'm not sure.
I don't want to discuss it anymore. Thank, I mean, I'm good, ready, move. I'm ready to move.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so preliminary approval, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill receives an affirmative recommendation.
Thank you, everyone.
Now, that does indeed exhaust our agenda for today. So I'll go to our meeting announcements, which is this afternoon at one PM. Council will hold an executive session on Bill thirteen ninety-seven as relates to professional services agreements. Also this afternoon at one thirty PM, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill thirteen seventy-two on a petition relative to the crisis of and reasons for the forced mass displacement of Black Pittsburghers. You can register for this hearing by filling out the sign-up form on the council meeting scheduled webpage by eleven thirty AM. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday and Wednesday, May eleventh and May twelfth at ten AM. You can register to speak at next week's meetings by filling out the sign-up form on the council meeting schedule webpage by nine AM next Tuesday and Wednesday mornings. You may also register by calling the city clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight. Are there any announcements from members?
Just, Mr. Chair, just quickly, if I may, maybe, Madam Clerk, this is a question for David Finer. Was our YouTube channel down for live broadcast this morning?
Yes.
It was. So will we be getting a rebroadcast?
Well, it's still on the cable channel and our granny is recording, so those are still recorded, but the YouTube was down this morning.
But I mean, for those who wish to view it on YouTube, it will ultimately come up.
It will.
Yeah, just not live. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else from members? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Done moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Are adjourned.